Is it going? Are we live? All right, it being a little after 7:00 PM on Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. Let's open the Kingston zoning board of appeals. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. First on the agenda is a public hearing for 54 Shore Drive. Lane, would you like to read it?
Um, yeah. Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street, Room 200 on Wednesday, September 17th at 7:05. So I think we need to wait.
All right, we need to wait three minutes. I didn't realize it was a 7:05. All right, cannot open it. We'll wait three more minutes. Um, yes. Yeah. We can't talk about anything else, so I'll go by, yeah, one minute. I'll go by astronomical clock, not by our clock. I didn't realize it was a 7:05 number. This one. Yeah, you can't, I can't. Yeah, I can't read that to save my life. No, it's like dots.
All right, it's 7:05.
There you go. Perfect. Take it away.
Uh, public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, 26 Evergreen Street on Wednesday, September 17th at 7:05 PM. Applicant Paul Baker, 54 Shore Drive, map 39, Lot 3, seeks a special permit for an addition to the home to a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling. Proposed addition does not meet 4.2.8.5 compliance Kingston bylaws. Uh, I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, why are you in front of us? Said, why are you in front of us? Give us the lowdowns.
All right, I thank you, Rick Grady from Grady Consulting, along with the applicant Paul Baker. Uh, this is an existing home at 54 Shore Drive, located in Rocky Nook, R20 zoning, uh, it's a pre-existing.
Is it not on? All right, take it from the top again.
All right, uh, thank you, Rick Grady from Grady Consulting, along with the applicant Paul Baker. This is an existing home at 54 Shore Drive in Rocky Nook. Uh, it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot with 50 feet of frontage and area, excuse me, a 14,592 square feet, so a decent size lot for down here. Uh, the existing home is located about 10 and a half feet off the side lot lines, uh, located in this area here. Uh, they would like to construct a garage addition to the front of the existing house heading towards Shore Drive. Uh, the setbacks are proposed at 10 and a half feet to the side lot lines, so we're maintaining the same side setback that previously existed. Uh, we're about 66.8 feet off of the front lot line, uh, so we're meeting the front lot line setback. Uh, we have a coverage of 21.3% of the lot area, so we're less than the 25% uh, requirement or uh, maximum. Excuse me. Um, it is located within the 100-foot buffer zone, two-way wetland resource area. We've obtained in order of conditions from the Conservation Commission already. Uh, we do have two parking spaces within the garage and at least two parking spaces outside of the garage for a total of at least four spaces available on the lot, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Is this the one house in the nook with the four bedrooms?
Uh...
Three?
Three bedroom, yeah.
Oh, wow. I'd say right around there is one with the four bedrooms.
Okay.
The biggest lot in Kingston, uh, Nook, excuse me, the Nook.
Oh, and building height's about the same as the existing, about 24 feet.
Um, we currently don't have much. Um, Lane, do you have anything while I'm thinking?
No, nothing.
Doug?
No, looks nice.
Bob?
I have no questions.
You guys aren't helping me. Marcia?
I have some questions.
All right, go ahead.
Your letter, uh, that would be Paul's letter, references, uh, section 7.7.2.1 of the zoning bylaws. I was just, I looked at them and I, it didn't seem applicable to this.
Uh, off the top of my head, I don't recall what that section says.
Okay, it says...
Where are you on that?
I'm on page, uh, two of the Grady Consulting letter, special permit, section, do you mean 4 point?
Oh.
I, I, I just, section, that section, I think, refers to multiple dwellings, maybe, or...
7.7.2.1?
Yes, yeah, or, you see that? Communication. Was that maybe just a typo?
Uh, perhaps, as I had mentioned, I don't recall what that section says, so I can't tell you exactly why that was in there or...
All right.
What it says.
Uh, now, you said the front yard setback, it meets the current zoning bylaws of 50 feet?
It does, correct.
All right, and it meets both the side yard setbacks?
It does.
What about the minimum open space requirements?
Uh, that's covered by the 25% building coverage maximum, and we have less than 25% building coverage.
Well, they have, no, it says maximum lot coverage by building is 25%.
Yeah, he's under it.
But the minimum open space appears to be 40.
Yeah, we're well in excess of that. We're in the vicinity of, oh, approximately 70 or so?
Of open space?
Correct.
I didn't see that on the... The other question I have is, um, oh, it's on my log, let me look at the log, hold on. When were the porches added? And do you have permits for the, there's a front porch and a side porch. Do you, did you get permits from the town to, to put those, or were they always part of the pre-existing non-conforming structure?
I don't know when those were added. We don't go through the history of them when we go out to do an existing condition survey. We locate what exists at the time of our survey.
Well, I'd just like to know, because if you want me to look at this as a pre-existing non-conforming structure, I'd like to know what consists of that. In previous cases, I know other member, the members have sort of said, it's the footprint, you know, it's, you know, the footprint, and then I looked at your site plan and I saw there were a couple of porches added, and it looked like there were a couple of additions, and I'd like to know what the history of those are before I can determine...
I don't think that's pertinent to what we're discussing tonight.
To me, it is.
Well, then you should have looked it up, because it interests you, but it's really not pertinent to this case.
I'm not...
This is a structure that, that conforms to the required setbacks. Don't know the history of every nail that was put into this place. We located what we did when we went out to do the survey.
Sir, I'm not the applicant. I don't have any burden of proof.
Well, our burden of proof is that we're meeting the existing setbacks.
And I...
The only thing I don't know is exactly the date that these pieces were put on the house.
And I'd like to know...
You're asking way more than any other case that we've ever had before this board.
All right, you have to speak, you have to speak up here. Sorry. I'm just letting it finish up before I step in.
And I think it's relevant to...
Paul Baker, I'm the owner of the house.
And I think for the record, I think it's relevant as to whether you do in fact meet the setbacks and the lot coverage.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
If you have a date for the permit, I'll, I can look it up.
So you would expect us to go pull the building permit records on this, to see when something may have been built on the property?
I would expect...
That has never happened in any case that's ever come before this board.
I would just...
I don't know where this is coming from.
I'm just asking you to provide me with an accurate history of the project, and if it was, if it's all part of a pre-existing non-conforming structure that's been in the nook before zoning was even adopted, then just show me that.
Uh, yeah, I gotta stop you there, because I'm lost with your, your statement doesn't work there.
All right, Paul, I'm sorry, I'm just saying, I'm having, I'm not gonna be able...
The current side setback here is 10 feet.
Okay, okay, hold on, hold on.
We meet the side setback.
All right.
Thank you, all right, that, that, thank you.
I think, so, I, to help both sides here is...
Porch added when?
Um, he doesn't have to prove that, because Paul Armstrong is the enforcer, so he wouldn't be able to move forward with anything...
Is Paul here?
No, Paul is not here.
I'd like Paul to be here, so he could answer those questions for me.
Well, again, that's, this is, Paul would not let, Paul wouldn't let this move forward.
I, I don't, I, I need to understand, Paul has...
Paul has allowed it to move to where it is now, so in other words, he's a backstop before us.
I don't want to get in any dispute with my board members.
Permit never would have been applied, approved if it was passed the...
Prior.
Thank you, thank you. I have no more questions. I'm just one vote.
I'm just putting it out.
You can put whatever you want out there. If Paul, I, I'm, I'm happy to continue the matter until Paul can be present.
I, I, I guess, I don't want to argue with you on this, but I guess the bigger problem is, is Paul is the one who moved this forward. So Paul would know from the drawings that if something wasn't permitted, he would stop it at where it's at and say, you don't have a permit for this, this deck, how can you move forward with the next piece?
You mean this page here that's signed off?
Well, that's what I'm saying, he would be the one who would, who would know.
You know, respectfully, if Paul were here, you know, Jason often appeared and these questions came up in my experience in the past, and, and he was able to answer them when we move forward.
Mr. Baker believes they were built in 2004.
When the house was reconstructed, and the porches don't go out any farther than the main structure of the house, because there's a main structure of the house, and then the porches are on each side of the main structure of the house, where my stairway goes up to the, to the upstairs.
And they conform to the current required setback.
Anything more, Marcia?
No, I don't have anything more.
All right, what is going to be upstairs in the garage?
Uh, what's upstairs above the garage?
Just open space, storage.
Storage. How high are the ceilings in the, in the garage? 10 foot, 12 foot? 12?
12.
With an eight foot upstairs space, I'm guessing?
Uh, not going any higher than the original structure that is there now.
So peaks stay the same across?
Yep.
Um, anyone else on the board? Anyone in the public that's here? I cannot ask anyone in the public out on Zoom, because we don't have that ability tonight. Um, you're welcome to call in if you have, or...
There's no one on there.
There's no one on there anyways. Um, can I get a motion to close the hearing?
Oh, I have one other question.
Oh.
Your plan shows some kind of, uh, where is it? Uh, the lot, uh, that's why I asked about the open space. It looks like, uh, let's be honest for you. It appears to be a proposed, is it?
The drainage system?
Subsurface drainage system.
Nope, we have a question.
Yeah, so, have, do you need any other permits for the installation of a subsurface drainage system?
Uh, yes, from the Conservation Commission had requested that, so that was part of the conservation approval.
And is that part of our package?
Uh, probably not.
Could you provide that to us?
Uh, as long as we're not continuing, yes.
Uh, were, were there any conditions attached to that that we should know about?
There's always conditions from the Conservation Commission. They were along the lines of plantings, uh, the infiltration system for the roof drainage, um, erosion control, and that's about it.
So they're making you basically put the garage into that well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Put it away from the, put it away...
That's a very common construction practice.
Again, I, I would...
It's a very common construction practice.
You know, if that works, that does not appear to be submitted, and, I mean, I guess the, the conditions on that permit would speak for themselves.
And that goes back to the building...
Thank you, Paul.
...building commissioner approving it because the other departments did it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's pretty very common.
All right, so you have conditions under, well, I made a motion to close the hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any discussion?
I'd like to continue the hearing, but if you want to go forward, that's your call.
What's your reason?
You can continue the hearing, you just ordered...
Oh, I'm sorry, then, I guess...
You have to reopen it.
I would, I would prefer, I'd like to get to the ask for you, but I have some questions that I don't want to argue with you about it.
That being said...
No one's arguing, I think we're just discussing.
Yeah, yeah.
We're trying to help you.
Are you trying to help me get to the ask, well?
No, not get to the ask.
I, I don't...
Trying to help you understand, which is...
I think providing me the permits and having Mr...
The common stuff that goes through.
All I asked is provide me the permits and have Mr., as part of the history, and that would answer it completely.
I think, well, two things I think is, is a problem there. Not a problem, but Paul Armstrong, A, is our only working building commissioner, who is only a part-time building commissioner, because we don't have a building commissioner currently, and he is the only one doing the whole job for the building department. So we have one retiree doing the whole thing.
Paul, that does not increase my confidence level.
I didn't say it should.
In what Paul did on this...
I'm just saying, there's already a heavy burden, and you're asking him for to show up for something where it wouldn't even go to us if they hadn't had the proper permits to get everything there. He couldn't get the piece in.
It's not part of our job, Marcia.
Thank you.
It's Paul's job. Um, that being said, uh, can I make a motion to vote? Someone can make a motion.
Make a motion to vote?
To what? Approve, deny what?
Do I make a motion to vote to approve?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You abstaining?
I'm, no, I'm opposed to it. I'm voting no.
Oh, for those...
No.
Those voting no.
Why would you do that to your neighbors?
Hey, why?
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Is it four to one?
Four to one, correct. Appeal period, you know the appeal period, 21 days. Next on the agenda, um, I just moved my... Lane, would you like to read?
Yes, a public hearing will be held at Town Hall, uh, September 17th at 7:10. Applicant Congregation of the Sisters of Divine Providence, 363 Bishop's Highway, map 104, Lot 2, seeks a special permit to convert formerly used as a convent-assisted living facility and group housing into an inpatient alcohol and drug treatment and residential rehabilitation facility pursuant to 10.7.8 Kingston bylaws.
All right, take it away. This, I, I have a feeling this is our preliminary run-through on this.
Good evening. My name is Adam Brodsky. I'm a local land use and environmental lawyer, and I represent the applicant Longview Realty, LLC. With me this evening are Eddie McGrath and Kayla Florence. Eddie is the CEO of Rockland Recovery Group, and Kayla is the Director of Finance. They're also part of the ownership group, but Rockland Recovery Group will be operating this facility if the board grants a special permit. Uh, you know Mr. Grady, our registered professional engineer with Grady Consulting, and we also have Jill Peebles, our registered architect with BKA Architects. Um, as, as Attorney Goldberg indicated?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Uh, this is a special permit to convert the existing buildings that were formerly operated by the Sisters to an inpatient alcohol and drug treatment and residential rehabilitation facility. Um, this use is a special permit use within the R80 zoning district. Um, you're likely more familiar with the property than me. The Sisters have operated a convent and assisted living facility and group housing on this particular parcel since the 1940s. That was part of their larger religious and educational mission, which included the Sacred Heart School. Uh, the property is under agreement for purchase by Longview. Uh, Longview is proposing to retain and convert the existing buildings, as I said, to this particular facility. Eddie and Kayla have extensive experience in alcohol and drug treatment, uh, and operate several outpatient facilities, and after my introduction, Eddie will explain why he does this work and what his specific experience is. Uh, the building interiors will be reconfigured for the proposed uses and brought into compliance with current building and fire safety codes. Uh, we're making minor site improvements and enhancing the property with landscaping, dark sky compliant lighting, and signage, and Rick will explain those site improvements, and then Jill will give you a sense of, of what the project will look like. Uh, the property and the existing buildings conform to all current zoning dimensional requirements, and, uh, there's more than adequate parking for the proposed uses. Uh, we've met with various town departments, including the town planner, the former building commissioner, the fire department, and the police department, and have addressed all of their concerns, and last week we appeared before the planning board for site plan approval. The project was well received, and in fact, the planning board, uh, granted site plan review after one evening's hearing.
Whoa, I, I heard you were still in the planning board.
No, they've, they've issued their decision. It's been filed with the town clerk.
As of when?
The, I, I have a copy in my briefcase, I'm happy to...
I'll have to see, because I heard that you were still in the planning board.
No, sir. No, so they closed the public hearing, issued a plight, site plan decision, which was filed with the town clerk.
Do you know when, like, like a week ago?
Again, if I might, um...
Hang on, the only reason I'm asking is, is we don't have anything from...
Yes, sir.
From the planning director, who she would usually give us basically a lowdown by now if it had been, happened within a week. She's actually pretty fast at turning things around.
I, I likely have a copy... I likely have a copy of the site plan decision, I'm happy to give it to the board.
Right, thank you.
It's in my, more than, likely than not, in my briefcase. The property is served by a private water supply as well as existing onsite sewage disposal, which will need to be upgraded, and as such, there'll be no impact to public services, and we respectfully suggest that we meet all of the elements for a grant of a special permit, and I've outlined that in our letter in support. And so with that, I'd like to turn this over with your permission to Eddie to explain who he is.
Yes.
And I'll look for a copy of that decision. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Eddie McGrath, and one of the owners of Rockland Recovery Group, and also one of the partners in Longview Behavioral Health, which is the project that we're here to speak about tonight. I personally have struggled with addiction throughout all my teens and twenties. Alcoholism and drug addiction runs rampant through my family, so when I speak about this matter, when I'm doing this type of work, I take it very serious because I know firsthand that it's life or death. I got sober almost 13 years ago in 2012. Not many people had hope in me getting better, and to be honest with you, I didn't have much hope in myself, but what that did for me is, once I did get into recovery, it gave me a passion of helping other people. Being in recovery, what it's really about is helping another drug addict or alcoholic. In the first year of recovery, I got full custody of my son, who was three at the time. He's now 14. I'm now married with five kids, and my wife is also in recovery. And 2017, I opened my first sober home in Rockland, Mass, and one of the main driving forces of me opening this house is I wanted to give guys in the South Shore the same opportunity that I had. I'm originally from the South Shore. I got sober up in Wakefield, Mass, in the North Shore. So what I did is I married this house that helped me change my life, and I opened this house in Rockland. In 2020, I partnered up with my cousin Kayla Florence to open up outpatient facilities. Kayla, who is more like a sister to me, we grew up in the same house together, but we come from two totally different walks of life. Kayla went to Thea Academy, went to Babson College, also pursued her education, getting her MBA at Babson Grad School. What we do at Rockland Recovery Group is we now have three outpatient facilities. The locations are Sharon, Quincy, and Braintree, and we service clients who struggle with substance use disorder and mental health. So basically, they come to our facility, we have them do work on themselves, and dig deep and fix what's broken, which is inside of us. They go through groups, they meet with a nurse practitioner to any type of med management they might need, they have a primary therapist to do one-on-ones. We are a mission-driven company, and what I mean by that is we always put our clients, their family members, and our team members first. We have won Boston's Business Journal Best Places to Work the past two years. One of our core values is philanthropy. We have just celebrated five years in business, and we have awarded over 300 scholarships to clients. And what a scholarship is, is basically if somebody calls our facility or reaches out to us, and they don't have insurance or the financial means, we take them in 100% free of charge. Giving back to our community is not optional, it's a priority. Some of the organizations we have partnered up with that you might know that are local are Cardinal Cushion Centers, Globe Santa, DEA for Kids. At Longview Behavioral Health, we will keep the same exact mission, same exact core values. When we first got into conversation with the Sisters, they wanted to know who we were and what we were about. They wanted to make sure that our values aligned, which we respected that. We want to continue helping people at this property as they have for so many years. Our goal is to be good neighbors, give back to the community, and I'm here to answer any type of questions you might have. I don't claim to have all the answers by any means, but one thing I will do is I'll always be honest. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Tridio, here's a copy of the site plan and the approval of the following town departments. September 9th.
So that was last Tuesday.
Yes, sir.
Gray, I guess if you want to go over the merits of the layout.
Sure, yep. Thank you, Rick Grady, Grady Consulting. This one is a little unusual from an engineering standpoint, because we're usually proposing buildings and proposing a lot of infrastructure. We're not proposing very much in this one. We have existing buildings that we're working with. The only, everything meets required setbacks. It's a 23-acre lot, there's no wetlands. It's unusual how spacious it is and how little work we're really doing here. The only thing we're really doing construction-wise is we are proposing additional parking to the rear, left rear, of the existing building. We're proposing some handicapped access ramps to provide accessibility to these existing older buildings. We will be upgrading some of the septic systems for additional flow, and really, as far as the site goes, that's really about it. There will be a drainage system associated with the new parking lot to the rear left. That is even taking advantage of a natural depression. So we're really not even cutting any trees or doing any grading for this infiltration basin, which we demonstrated through the planning board, and their peer reviewed it. Will fully infiltrate the 100-year storm. It's a pretty good-sized kettle hole over to the left of the parking lot. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions on the site that you may have.
Anyone have site plan questions? Elaine?
No, I don't.
Doug? Bob?
Very impressive presentation. Just wondering, the neighbors in the area, what they kind of think of it, whether that's part of our to deal with, or is that more of the planning board to deal with?
I should point out for you that there was a request to put up a fence between the existing building in this area here and the school to the right of that, so we are showing fencing along the property line that was requested.
I do have a question for that, but I think it's more geared toward you. Yeah, what is the situation having a drug recovery next to a preschool?
It's not prohibited under law. Again, the, when we consulted with the police department, they had heard some comments, not necessarily from butters, but parents of children who attended the school.
Yeah, I can see why. It just jogged my mind out of nowhere because I have children.
Of course, and, and we consulted with the police department. They were satisfied, but as an added measure, they asked us to install a fence, simply to discourage anyone. The distances from our facility to the school are fairly long.
Yeah, is it 500 feet or 1,000? I mean, we're part of the same...
That's correct. And again, this is a supervised facility.
I understand, but a lot of things are supervised.
I'm not familiar with that. What preschool is there?
The one there had like all the colors, like the red, blue, it kind of set back off.
Things part of an elementary.
My sisters do.
Okay.
Up by the old Stolig High School.
So I mean, they're, they would have to be here to object to that? I mean, that's part of...
And again...
Well, that's kind of the interior.
Yeah, I mean...
Bob, just like, I want to think of a legal thing.
Obviously, we provided a butter notice.
Yeah, there's not a lot.
There was no, there was no, there was not, I don't think anyone attended the planning board meeting. We're really at a distance from any residential neighborhood, which is why the site is ideal for this use. It's really separate and on a large lot. And again, you know, the, the nice thing about this program, it's entirely consistent with the Sisters' decades-long mission of doing good for the community. In fact, that's one of the reasons why they selected this group to acquire the property, because they wanted to continue that mission going forward. But we, and we've heard nothing but positive comments from, you know, the various departments, including the police department. So unless you have more questions for Rick or for me?
Oh, I have no...
Hold on, yeah, I'm still moving. Bob, do you have anything?
Public transportation to that area, and what is the general access for the tenants to walk around? I mean, what do, are they restricted to be in the facility? Can they go down to the mall down the street? I mean, I, I don't, just curious.
No, no, of course, and these are questions that were also asked by the various departments, and Eddie, you can address how clients are transported to the facility.
So any patients that are going to be in the facility, they get, we provide transportation for them, they don't bring their vehicles, they stay there for anywhere from seven to 21 days, and then they go to another facility, or they might go, even go home. We are going to have an outpatient facility also in this building, and those clients will be driving themselves there, but these are, they're not, this is after they have already finished detox and residential, so this would be after somebody, this is like the next step. But if somebody does, is going to leave the building, we will give them options of providing them with transportation, and we also spoke with the police department that we can, we'll work something out with them, that we can call them as well.
And the only other question is, God forbid, somebody acts up or doesn't conform to the rules, what happens?
So then, we would have to, we would call the police if somebody's acting up, or call the fire department.
Are they asked to leave the facility? Is it, it's all, it's not mandated by the court, this is people come there on their own right?
This is all voluntary, yeah.
I just, I just want the...
The proximity to the school is...
Of course. I don't want people to think it's a massive cast of kings, and I'm not, I'm not putting any...
I understand.
Any spin on it. I think it's a great function for people who need it.
Yep.
If I might add something, in speaking with the police chief and his various lieutenants, what they recommended and asked us to do is to develop protocols with them, and they want to come in and work directly with staff regarding training, and that was one of their concerns. We, of course, welcome that, and will agree to do that. And so we've already, your question's prescient because that was a concern of the police department, and they're already thinking about protocols, how they want us to manage this situation. And again, we're going to work hand in hand with the police department to make sure that lines of communication are open, and we're implementing a plan of action that they support.
Yeah, because those are questions that obviously the police, fire, and everyone else answers. Our question, the question to our board is zoning, and we're not trying to reinvent the wheel with the other departments. Those are the questions that we had to ask, just make sure the other departments are kosher with it, so to speak.
Yes or no, and we agree to support that. You know, again, it's a limited issue for the board, it's an approval of a change of use to a special permit use under your table.
Understood, correct. Going back to the heart of the question of why are you here in front of us? That's, sometime we go off on a tangent on hearing those, but we want to make sure that that's the specific question to our board, and that's our answer, right?
And again, we're happy to answer any questions you have. I just wanted to let you know that we had anticipated that issue after speaking with the police department. Chief was great, again, very supportive of the use here. We're going to work closely with the police department to address the specific issue that you raised.
Okay, I'm good, Paul.
Thank you. Marsha?
Oh, yeah, good. Just on this note, following up on what many of the members have expressed, as Member Mullin just said, we're just limited to the impact of your facility evaluating and under our bylaws, and your openness to sharing with everyone, your willingness to work with the police and all of the town public safety departments, the ambulance would be certainly someone, in case, in case something happened at your facility despite all of the care that I know that you're going to be providing your patients. So my, one thought I might suggest is, like, have you considered entering into like a memo of understanding with the town to sort of deal with some of these operational aspects that would be questions that the citizens might ask, you know, and that it would be easy to say, oh, yes, we have a memo of understanding, and so, that's just food for thought. On your actual application, you said there's a maximum of a 21-day stay. Is there, are there intervals, like three days, seven days, 10, or, I mean, this is an operational detail, I know. I'm just trying to think about turnover of people in and out of...
Right. So, as I said, it is voluntary, so anybody can leave really whenever they want, but our suggested stay would be, our recommended stay would be 21 days.
Okay. So your goal is, if people follow your recommendations?
Yes.
That every one of your 60 beds would be occupied for four 21 days?
Correct.
Would that be true when your doors open?
Well, when the doors open, we're doing it in phases, so the first phase will only be 24 beds.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then phase, all right. And so I'm assuming that the outpatient aspect that you mentioned would be another phase?
That'll be part of phase one.
Oh, that's going to be part of phase one?
But, but those, those people, those clients or patients, whatever you want to call them, they won't be staying there overnight.
Okay.
They will be coming there from nine to three or nine to 12 during the day.
Okay, now, just trying to think of foot traffic, those people would be local, probably would be, as you said, I think they'll be driving their cars.
Correct.
Is there a headcount that you have on your, that you're aiming for?
It will be max 20 to maybe 30 people, max.
We're going to have to have some sort of number on that, because you are, you're ready, you get what she's getting at, you're generating a traffic thing, where you could say, oh, you have 100 people, so we have, you're going to have to put, condition yourself, in other words.
Thank you, Tridio. The, the planning board determined that our proposed parking is suitable for the proposed use, and we have...
That's a planning board decision.
No, it is.
I'm thinking of like Paul's guy.
Yeah, I get what you're saying, but, but, so you, so the planning board set you at a number?
Correct.
What's your number?
Total number of parking spaces, Rick?
No, 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 not parking spaces, by, so, by amount of trips. So if you, if you're going to have, you know, let's say you have a couple of buses there, they're going to take up a couple of spots, because those are, those are the things moving people around, and then you're going to have people coming and going from, you said, 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM or 9:00 to 5:00. So that's basically like a business, so you have to have basically a headcount where you can't go over that number and have cars lined up basically along the grass, along the road. So I guess what I'm saying, you, you have to condition yourself, or we can condition you just the same.
Again, Rick, do you want to speak to parking? Again, we've addressed the parking requirement, which were determined to be adequate by the planning board. We're not going to have, I'm sorry, we're not going to have large buses of people all floating at this facility.
No, 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 I'm not saying that. I'm, what she's getting at is, you, you...
I can speak for myself.
Go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
Okay. I'm not deeply concerned about parking, because, yeah, I'm familiar with the area. There's plenty of land for parking, if that would become an issue. And I want you to be successful, so don't get me wrong. What I'm worried about is traffic. I mean, there are times during the day, because of the preschool that's there, and there's an elementary school that's right there on Bishop's Road that you're going to be on, and it can get really kind of hairy.
So we're going to respectfully disagree, Ms. Meekins. Those facilities are a distance away. This is a state highway. Rick can talk to line of sight. This is not a high-traffic use, so that you understand.
All right, well, that's good.
Understand that. But, Rick, you can speak to this issue.
It sounds like the question is having to do with the capacity of the facility as it...
It sounds like the question is having to do with the capacity of the facility as it relates to parking. We will be limited very easily on beds to 69 beds. 60 within this building, nine within this building. So that is easy to quantify. What we may need to figure out is capacity on the outpatient, whether that's based on number of clinicians or whether that's based on a maximum number of people in that portion of the facility. So I don't know if we have a. Right, and was there a?
And thank you for correcting me. I should have noticed, in my firm's letter to the board, I believe that the bed count was incorrect on page one. It's a total of 60.
69.
69 beds. So I just, so that was a, that was an earlier version. I believe in the letter, it actually has the correct bed count, but I believe that there's a typographical error there. But, but again, this is not a high-traffic use. It's not lots of people coming in and out during business hours. And again, you can, you can see the, you know, the lines of sight, access in and out of the facility. It's really ideal, the no-traffic-related impacts. So hopefully that answers your concerns, but if you have additional concerns, I mean, we're happy to address them and provide some additional information.
What's the estimated amount? I mean, what's, what's your estimated amount of trips for people that are outpatient?
So though, you would like an estimated vehicle trip count?
Yeah, well, I mean, you have outpatient and you said you could hold up to 30 people, so that's at least 30 cars during that time period. Is it an all-day affair? Is it a two-hour thing?
No, he said, he gave the hours.
Yeah, but is it counseling, two hours, is it four hours, is it eight hours, is it six hours?
And how many clinicians? Again, I don't even know the headcount of employees.
In the outpatient, there'll be about four to five staff members, okay? When it's at a max of the census at 30 clients, those clients will not all be driving there. They, some of them Uber, some of them we transport in a van, so.
But worst-case scenario, there could be 30.
30.
They all could be driving, that's my point.
No, we have, we have three facilities now and not all of them drive.
How long are the classes?
Say that again?
How long are the outpatient classes? Are they eight hours?
So it'd be nine to three.
So there's six hours on them. That's always, like, there's not like a one-hour one, there's not a three-hour one, there's not a.
So you could do nine to 12.
So there's two different ones, that's.
Correct.
So this is, this is starting to morph into something more. Because you could do two, two different things at two different times. You could do 30 from nine to 12 and then you could do another 30 from.
No, 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 it would be 30 combined from nine to 12 or nine to three. Total census would be 30.
Marshall, you continue, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
It wouldn't be like 30 from nine to 12 and then another 30 from nine to three, combined.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, I'm just trying to get like the worst, if you're at maximum.
Worst case.
And at your maximum capacity, you know, that's what I'm kind of aiming to understand. And I appreciate your patience. Going back to your 69 beds, that would be, and there's a possibility that they could all be occupied at the same time. And hopefully, if you're successful, they will be. You know, there'll always be some turnover, but most of the beds will be hopefully in use if your facility. I mean, it's kind of a mixed blessing if you're successful.
Right.
That means there's a lot of people out there that really need this treatment, so that's a whole nother discussion. Question, what is your staffing of just the inpatient 69-bed facilities? I'm assuming it's a 24/7?
Yes. So the 60 would be the inpatient facility and nine would be on the house. What's the house called?
The building numbers?
The Formation House.
Formation.
So the Formation House, there'll be nine, there'll be nine beds there and they will not have any vehicles. As far as the inpatient facility, no vehicles there, but the staffing will be anywhere between. We'll probably have about 40 people on the staff, but not all at once. It's 24 hours.
What is the nine, what are the nine beds for?
That's going to be sober living.
And that's long-term? That's more than 21 days?
That could be up to 30, about 30 to 60 days.
And can those people, like, if it's sober living, can they like have a job and drive a car?
Some of them will be going to the outpatient facility. So they won't have jobs. They'll be going, they'll be, during the day, they'll be going to the outpatient facility.
So it's a different step in their recovery?
Correct. It's after inpatient.
Okay.
One other goofy question, is there kitchen staff, kitchen staff, are they going to be fit?
Yes.
That's part of the, that's part of the 40?
Now, and you have food deliveries.
So we're going to be starting off with, we're going to be getting food delivered there. It's going to be.
So another, a little more traffic, but not killer.
Are you planning, I'm sorry, I didn't even know. I should have looked at your plans.
Catering, it'll be like a catering kitchen.
Long-term, are you planning on installing like commercial kitchen?
Yes.
Facilities in the 60-patient, inpatient facility, maybe not the nine, but the 60?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Any other commercial-type renovations that you would be making to the 60-bed inpatient facility?
Ms. Beakins, I'm not sure I understand your question. Again, we have Ms. Peebles here who's the architect. She could explain to you the renovations of the building.
Kind of goes to your other issue about, you know, what, what are you under our zoning bylaws?
Oh, well, this is, this is a hospital nursing care facility, which is a special permit use.
Right, but a hospital usually has a cafeteria and they.
This is not a hospital, so that your definition has various aspects to it. There's nursing care, et cetera, et cetera. This falls within that.
Multiple zones in that, correct.
Multiple uses within that particular category of uses. And it's already been determined by, you know, the town planner, the building commissioner at the time, that that's the appropriate use category for this. So again, it's a special permit use within this R80 zoning district.
Okay. I'll just go on and ask my questions. One more question about the plan. It says that you're reducing the existing open space that it's currently 45.5 down to 30.32.4. Is that, is that for parking? I'm not, I just couldn't understand.
That's due to the newer parking lot in the back-left corner behind the outpatient. So it's due to the additional parking lot here.
Anything else, Marshall?
No, not right now.
Playing back to you real quick?
I don't have anything. I appreciate you doing this. I mean, this is a needed service. And I think that, you know, the, I would just want to focus the board on what we need to decide. And I think it's on Attorney Brodsky's page five of the memo, just going through those factors. There is nothing that I can see that's going to adversely affect the neighborhood. And the traffic really, it's a non-issue because of what was there before. So I don't see an issue with this at all and I welcome it because I know that there are many people out there that need this.
Doug? Paul?
Again, impressive presentation and Wayne says, kids dropping off for high school when the high school is open, back and forth with the traffic, can't be any worse than that, so I'm good.
So I only have a few, few quick things. As touched on before, fire, I know we've had other places in town that require an ambulance. Eighty percent of an ambulance use goes as basically one facility in town. And I fear this might have some, some sort of drain of the same magnitude and be pulling basically probably from the Kingston Mall area since that's the closest ambulance to the area or a fire truck. My curiosity is, if, if any language has come from them, I can reach out to them and ask them what they would think would be a proper, because like I said, to put it out there, I know the nursing home that's local over by the high school draws a lot of trips for the ambulance, a lot. Like more than the whole town. So my fear is that you might possibly be another draw like that. And they have complained in the past that we have a problem because if one ambulance goes down, we're down to one ambulance for the town and it's doing calls to one place and then they have to pull in from another town to cover a car accident or something else. So I'd have a curiosity from the fire, if you have a letter and they say, you know, I don't know what you'd have, I don't know the answer to this. But I just know they've complained about other areas that are just as big, or they might be a little smaller than you, they might be a little bigger, I don't know. But I do know it generates a lot of trips.
So all I can say is that we did consult with the fire department. The fire department did provide comments to the planning board. They did not ask for.
Anything?
A new ambulance.
No, no, I know they wouldn't. I know they wouldn't.
Interestingly, at one point, I think someone mistakenly sent to us a fire department memo for another proposed development in this area where the fire department was asking for a new ambulance. That made my, my heart flutter and I was subsequently told, no, no, that was a mistake. The fire department was told that they can't ask an applicant to provide an ambulance. With that said, this is not going to be the draw of, of an assisted living facility or elder care facility, which, you know, you have elderly ill people. I'm not saying that there is not going to be calls to the.
Right.
Fire department. And, and so you know, the fire department's actually been on the site. Ms. Peebles met with them. They're satisfied with the vehicle access. And they've asked us to look at other things to make their job easier. But at no time has the fire department said, oh, yeah, we can't serve this, you need to buy us a new $300,000 ambulance.
They're more than that.
There was an article in the newspaper.
I think they're double that.
Yeah, I, I think there's an article in the newspaper about, about the departments complaining about the cost of fire.
Fire.
Equipment, yes.
Your client must have experience with that in your other facilities.
There's no inpatient ones.
No, it wasn't inpatient, but I am familiar with other inpatient facilities. And what they do, and which we are also willing to do, is sign a contract with like Fallon or another ambulance for non-emergency. If somebody needs to be taken out, we, instead of calling the 911 or calling the Kingston Fire, we call them and they'll transport.
I would think the town would prefer that you call us first and them second. But we do have mutual aid agreements with other local communities.
Yeah.
And so public, our public safety is, is a really something, a service that we gladly provide.
Of course.
Before we move forward, the only, only issue I have for tonight is, well, is it state-funded or state-run?
No.
Oh, private, all right. And then last but least, I don't know, and we have legal counsel here, if I could move forward for two reasons. Well, A, I want to see the letter from the town planner that gives suggestions off of their, off the planning board. She usually gives us a letter stating their, their issues that they have that they cannot, you know, deal with. And then B, since we don't have the ability to talk to Zoom, it kind of puts us in a weird position.
Do we talk to the people on there?
I can't talk to them.
I can do it.
You can? I would rather do it tonight.
It's probably kind of late now.
And again, Trudale, I don't know what to say about the letter from the planner. You actually have the site plan approval with their conditions.
I know, but the town, so the town planner usually gives us basically a synopsis of, instead of us reading the decision of the planning board, she gives us a synopsis of, you know, this is the cues that we had. These are the problems we had. That way we have it in the same, you know, context. We're not, we're not caught off guard by something later on and we go, oh, we didn't, we just didn't see it because it was talked during the planning discussion.
Paul, I bet the problem is they're so understaffed there as well. It just came down on the ninth?
Yeah.
The board, did you just, the commission, the planning commission voted on the ninth to approve, approve the project?
No, it was stamped on the ninth. It was stamped.
But that may be the delay and.
What is that letter? That is his letter, by the way.
So just so you know, that this was not controversial. There was a decision ready for the planning board on the eighth. They voted.
Oh, I'm not saying it's controversial. No, I'm not saying it's controversial at all.
But I just wanted to draw your attention to, I guess, the, there are only two conditions of the planning board. One, the planning board had the project peer-reviewed by Pat Brennan at PGB Engineering. He had some very minor comments on the stormwater report, which is, this is conditioned upon Rick providing, and again, Rick can speak to really, really minor stuff.
Yeah.
And second, because we're, I believe, in the Water Resource Protection District, we've got to get a water quality certificate from the Water Commission and a special permit from the ZBA. So this is not a project where there was obviously a lot of open issues. As I mentioned, they really embraced this, as you, you're also embracing the project.
Right.
It's a great reuse of this particular property. This use is almost ideally sited here and we're reusing, I'm not going to say these are historic structures, but we're using, reusing the structures that the sisters have used for decades in a manner consistent with their mission, which was really important to them and also important to Eddie and Kayla. So I think that's why there was just not a lot of concern or conditions from the planning board.
Very good. Anyone from the public, or is it not popular? Anyone on Zoom, Mr. Guidaboni or iPad number nine? Yay or nay? Very good. Anyone making a motion or does anyone have anything more to say to anybody? Anyone can make a motion if they want. I just felt like continuing just so we could hear from. Just, just for one, I'm not against it at all. I like it. I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything incorrect that puts a major hiccup for an appeal by a neighbor down the street that says, I didn't know about this and I was on Zoom and I couldn't talk. So that's my only fear is it would clean it, make it more clean.
Well, could we close the hearing and?
Well, can we ask legal counsel for his opinion?
And then get what we need and.
Trudale, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I mean, the, the public hearing was advertised in person with an option for Zoom. You do have a couple of people who are attending, but is your concern that they haven't raised their hand and unmute?
I'm just more worried, A, that because we didn't, earlier on in the meeting, we didn't have Zoom available. I didn't realize Blake could just hop over there and do it. We don't have our secretary here.
Well, they can just unmute on there.
Sure, I'm, again, I'm just used to having a secretary do the job. Not, I didn't realize we had a backup.
And again, Trudale, we will obviously defer to the board's decision.
I would like to continue. I'd love to have another clean next meeting, but I just want to make sure that nothing is missed so that when we come to the conclusion of it, that we didn't screw up. And because we didn't get anything from the planning, we, we don't have our building commissioner here at all or, or any building department head here. We don't have.
Something to support.
Yeah.
And it's not your fault.
Yeah, yeah, it's not your fault at all. The town planner has, we have no paperwork from the town planner. We have something from the planning board, but not from the town planner. And we have a really off night with, with not having a secretary here. So as much as I am pro it, I just don't want to screw anything up and then have to find out that I did something procedurally wrong or because Zoom was an issue. Now that Zoom is the new thing at meetings, which I do not like, it causes another, another burden against when you're running it.
Would you be, will your project be prejudiced in any way if we?
Continue to one meeting?
We have to continue it.
When is your next meeting?
A week?
So.
I don't think we're coming back.
October, early October.
This issue is not the board's issue. We do have, have a permitting period under our purchase agreement.
Okay, that's.
And so their timing is of concern to us. It's not a concern to the board, so we understand that.
October 1st is our next meeting. Two weeks exactly.
Is that something that you can work with within the confines of?
Yes.
All right. Because I don't think that, you know, we could take maybe a poll of the board if that would help you. But I think the sense. but I think the sense, I certainly am wildly in favor of this. Everybody that I know in my life has been touched by the scourge of addiction, so anything that we can do to help people fight that fight.
I mean, it could be pretty simple at the next meeting, it's just...
No, no, I was just reminded of, of some other permitting requirements within our permitting period, so it's, it's, it does put pressure on, on the project and on ownership.
You're, you're just, you're waiting on the planning?
Planning and if the building commissioner, or if, sorry, I can't even see that, our, our current building, you know...
I mean, my view is that it was noticed and...
We can, you can make a motion.
I move that we grant a special...
Can't do that.
We can't?
Nope.
We have to close the...
Oh, I move that we close the hearing.
Can I get a second?
Well, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Can I get a second?
I second it.
Oh, a favor?
All right.
I mean, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve...
I second it.
Before I do that, I, I wanna defer to you, but your concern is...
We're a board of five, so this was just more of a, I don't wanna find out tomorrow, be like, oh, I meant to get that out, but I didn't, this was my...
Well, that, I mean, that's on them, it's not on the applicant.
I, I understand that.
So they did all of what they needed to do.
I understand that, I just know if you've been inside the townhouse recently, there's not a lot of...
I haven't, and I don't...
You only get yelled at when you screw up, I know that, Paul, so... When you do a great job, nobody cares.
There's just a lot, a lot of...
I genuinely don't see an issue with, with this, this is a special permit, and it's...
I get it, I get it.
They've met their burden, in my opinion.
Well, you're right, I, I just was just, I only put my one concern out there.
I know.
I'm the one who gets the headshot.
I will make a motion to approve the special permit for the applicant. Oh, the applicant is Congregation of the Sisters of Divine?
So the applicant is long, we had to get permission of the Sisters since the, the current property...
Oh, they are the owner, okay, all right, yeah, that makes sense, so I'll, I'll make a...
May I ask a procedural question, which is that I, I know that you have five regular voting members, and I think Ms. Meekins is an associate?
Correct.
Is she sitting in as a, as a voting member for purposes of this hearing?
Yes.
Because obviously, as, as you all know, I, I need a supermajority of the board for a grant of a special permit, which would be four out of five.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then, can you, can you just make sure that for this permit, if we grant it, that that permission from the Sisters is just in our file? You must have it?
Oh, it's, 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 it's in there.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
We, we had to get their signature to submit the application, so you have to sign...
Just wanna make sure, some people have gotten, say, oh, we're going to hold the land.
No, 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 no.
And then we go, well, how much of the land are you on, and we go, well, we'll have it when you give us the permit.
It comes as no surprise that there are a lot of lawyers who have worked on this. I, I can represent to the board that I needed to go to the Sisters' council expressly for permission to file all of the applications, again, without disclosing terms of any purchase agreement. The Sisters wanted to review everything, because again, they were very concerned with the future use of the property, which is why, you know, this group was selected. So you have a, you have a signed, I believe, a signed application form from the Sisters, obviously consenting to the, the submitted...
I was just making sure it's in the paperwork, I don't need to see it, I just wanna make sure it's in our file. Can I get a sec, did you make one?
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit by the applicant for three-sixty-three Bishop's Highway.
I second it.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
So that's everybody.
Thank you for your consideration.
No problem. That being said, I'll make a motion to move into executive discussion, and can I get a second?
Second.
Whomever, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh. Thank you, sir, see, this is my second one ever, can I get a roll call for ayes, please?
Aye, Ling, over.
Aye, Douglas Stondare.
Aye, Robert Woodmullen.
Aye, should I vote? I wasn't part of this prior decision.
You're sitting here in the absence.
I have to vote, oh, okay.
You're part of the meeting.
All right, aye.
Your name?
I'm into voting to go into...
Aye, in your name.
Oh, aye, Marshall Meekins.
Aye, Paul Dullin. We will be returning to do an adjournment after.
You can adjourn from, from executive session, you just say you're closing the open portion of the meeting, you will adjourn at executive session, you will not return to open session, you have no further business on the agenda.
All right, we'll be adjourning the open session, and we'll be, after, at the end of the executive, executive session, we will adjourn the meeting, correct? Thank you, good night.